Stand for the pledge and I'll let the sheriff lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Welcome you to the 21st meeting of the year for the Board of Mahoney County Commissioners. Today is Thursday, May 27 at 10:00 a.m. and we want to welcome our Sheriff, Jerry Green. Welcome. Always nice to have you here, Sheriff.
Nice to be seen and thank you for having me.
Absolutely. And you want to do that now?
Yeah.
Wait till the end? Okay. And we have a new employee that we need to introduce, Mr. Ryan Stanko. He is our new budget analyst. We want to welcome you to Mahoney County. And if you would care to say a few words, if you don't. Introduce yourself.
I mean, what I look, I guess, you know.
Yeah, just come up to the podium. Just say hello to everyone because you're going to meet them one way or the other.
Name's Ryan Stanko, just started on Monday. Really excited and just eager to learn, seems like I.
Where you from, Ryan? Why don't you just go slowly?
I'm actually from Struthers, Struthers, Ohio. Graduated in 2007, went to Youngstown State University. Got my bachelor's in accounting, been working for First National Bank for the last five, six years. And just really eager to get out of the private sector and into the public sector.
You're not related to Pat Janetti, are you?
No.
Okay, that's good. That was, I think that's the first prerequisite on the list there when we interview people. Nobody that's related to Janetti. Being from Struthers, though, between Janetti and Carol Wiegetti, they're related to every person in Mahoney County.
Oh, yeah. Believe me, the name definitely rings a few bells.
Pat, could you please come over to the meeting in person so we can?
Do I need to bring out the? No, go ahead.
Do you still live in Struthers?
Oh, yes, yeah, still live in Struthers.
Well, they didn't throw you out like they did Janetti. Janetti got thrown out of Struthers.
They, believe me, probably a few times they thought about it, but now I'm still hanging around.
Good deal.
Good deal.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Where'd you go to school at, Ryan?
Uh, Struthers. I went to Struthers and then went to Youngstown State.
Youngstown State, county department.
I started to go like right when they built the nice new building over there, the nice business one, so it's perfect timing.
Wait a second, you know, we don't want to even go there, you know? When me and Carol went there, the only one was Jones Hall, you know? What they used to call it, that we used to say it was UCLA, the University on a corner of Lincoln Avenue? That was the only building.
School of the undecided, that's what we used to call it. We never know what class to take.
And the Board of Education building, that was a school of business, too.
Youngstown State always had a great engineering.
It's everybody told me I wasn't, wasn't smart enough to be an engineer, so.
Counting's no walk in a park either, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Welcome aboard.
Ah, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, that being said, I will ask for a motion to approve previous minutes of Board meeting number 20 and approval bills for payment.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Amiri Wiegetti?
Yes.
Yes. Journal entry?
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Amiri Wiegetti?
Yes.
Yes, moving on, agreements A through E, O M B grants.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hello, Anna.
Letter A is an agreement with the city of Camel for public lottery improvement in the amount of $50,000, non-general. That'll be located along Roosevelt Park area. Letter B is an agreement with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the subsidy grant 407 community-based non-residential correction program for fiscal years 2022 and 2023 in the amount of $547,920. Letter C is an agreement with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the subsidy grant agreement 408 community-based non-residential corrections programs for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 in the amount of $342,944.
Anna. O M B grants A, when we awarded, we will be awarding that 50,000 to Camel. I think it would be now that after the period is gone and we're allowed to go back on the road to call Camel and ask that we go to a city council meeting with the mayor and present this, present a check to them as we do with all the other ones in the townships. I'd like to see that, well, we would like to see that happen. So the community actually knows that we are working for them, you are through us.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lou, recycling.
Morning Commissioners. D and E, item D is our agreement with the city of Youngstown to provide litter control, recycling services, special event collections, and education for the city of Youngstown. And item E is our agreement with the city of Youngstown to provide a tire drive for the residents there within the borders of the city.
Thank you, Lou. Motion to approve agreements?
Motion to approve agreements number two, A through E.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Amiri Wiegetti?
Yes.
Yes, motion to approve resolutions?
Motion to approve number one, resolutions edition.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, resolution awards to A, O M B, Anna.
Commissioners, this is part of our community development block grant program fiscal year 20. And it's an award in the city of Camel to complete a reservicing project on Debit Avenue. The award is to Lindy Paving in the amount of $78,230 in five cents, non-general and low bid.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve number two, resolutions of awards A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, resolutions A through G, Linda McCullough, Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good morning, everyone. Letter A is a support grant to Youngstown Class C baseball, who will once again be hosting the N A B F World Series at Seen Park in Struthers. The 14 and under divisions will be there July 8th through the 11th. The 16 under and 18 under divisions will be there July 15th through the 18th. This event draws many, many people to the area. They stay in our hotels, they dine in our restaurants. So this is a support grant in the amount of $5,000 for that event, those two weekend events.
Okay, thank you. Human Resources, Karen.
Morning Commissioners. Letter B is a resolution to approve the Consumer Driven Health Products Agreement with Medical Mutual of Ohio. As you know, we always try to improve our benefits offered to our employees at no cost. This is one of those options where we're going to be opting in to offer improvements for our flexible spending accounts. Just so everybody knows, the employees will no longer be required to provide substantiation for transactions under $100 and for any vendors that they consider low risk, such as doctors or hospitals. Again, no longer will the employees have to provide substantiation. So that's going to make, make it flow a whole lot easier for our employees to get healthcare benefits at no cost. And the second one, C, is a resolution to rescind prior amendments to the county personnel manual with an updated addendum made in accordance with the new CDC and Ohio, state of Ohio orders for COVID-19.
Karen, could you give an update on what some of the changes that are in that? That, that new amendments prior?
I'm sorry, I'm not even on the speaker. I, off the top of my head, we will, as of June 2nd, following the state of Ohio mandates, people will not be required to wear their masks. However, we do recommend that those people who have not received a vaccination, who are still at high risk, to continue following those kind of guidelines. Same with, we're going to still continue to have the temperature monitors, the kiosks at all the doors so that we ask employees to still consider doing their own risk assessment every day just to monitor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
What about courtrooms? Have we talked to the judges yet to find out what their protocols will be in the courtrooms or they're under our same protocols?
There is an add, in this addendum, I did put that all the departments who still are on staggered shift should consider bringing their employees back. I haven't heard any feedback because until the board passes this amendment, that addendum, it hasn't gone out.
Okay.
I did talk with Bob, and the judges will be having their court as regular session starting. They've already started. I think Judge, the appellate already has started, perhaps jury court already. And basically county offices will be open next week. The board's meeting will be open to the public and people can come in. So we'll now have the buildings open for the public after this point.
And did we not say, Audrey, that we can't tell people to wear a mask, but if they feel they should, we encourage them to do so? There will be no reprisal. If you want to wear a mask, wear your mask. If you're sick and don't feel good, you want to put it on, we encourage you to please put it on.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Karen. You're welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Audrey.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Letter D, job and family servants resolution to approve the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services sub-agreement, sub-grant agreement. This resolution is for the approval to enter into the vienna sub-grant agreement between our department, the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Service, and the Ohio Department of Medicaid. The sub-grant agreement establishes terms and conditions for our department's receipt of funding for state fiscal years 2022 and 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. O M B grants, Audrey, or domestic, we have somebody here? Anna?
Commissioners, this is a resolution in support of a grant application with the Ohio Criminal Justice Services for the BAWA 2021 award in the amount of $60,000 with the cash match being provided by the Domestic Relations Court Special Projects Fund.
Thank you, Anna. And sanitary, Pat Janetti.
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving the appointment of one treatment plan aide and one general maintenance worker one at the sanitary engineering department.
Thank you. And Mr. Green, our sheriff. Yes, do you mind?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me here. This is a resolution approving the agreement with CoreCivic Incorporated pursuant to the U.S. Department of Justice, the Marshal Service. It's an intergovernmental agreement for the housing of federal prisoners. What this essentially meant was, a couple of months ago, CoreCivics was not sure whether or not they would be able to house federal inmates anymore, for whatever reason. What that essentially would have done is put a bunch of jobs in Mahoney County and the city of Youngstown at risk. So for about the past two months, Pete Elliott, the Marshal Service, and my office were basically working towards some kind of a resolution to be able to remedy that issue. Couple of weeks ago, we were, maybe about a month ago or so, we were pretty close. We thought we even went a tour over at CoreCivics to potentially take over a wing of their facility, which would have meant we would have had to hire a bunch of their employees and do a hiring push where we would have housed the inmates ourselves through leasing one of the wings. For whatever reason, that deal fell through. Couple of weeks ago, we found out that the government, government was going to be okay with us having a pass-through contract or what is called an intergovernment agreement, meaning that the sheriff's office would charge the U.S. Marshals a certain fee and then we would end up paying CoreCivics, allowing those jobs, allowing them to house federal inmates in the penitentiary over there. And the biggest benefit of this was it was basically saving jobs in the city of Youngstown. They'll be able to continue to collect the income tax on that. It's better for Mahoney County and it also worked out big time for the U.S. Marshal Service because they're able to house the local federal inmates within our region. So we benefit from it as well. So all the way around, it turned out being, you know, a pretty good deal to do this. Does anybody have any questions or?
Sheriff, when does it, when does it start? When do you intervene?
This will take place, I believe, the last day of this month. There's, there's two individuals, Tony Grande and Jeb Beasley are on the call. They're executives from CoreCivics. If you would like to ask them any questions about how we came about this.
That would be. I first would like to ask you, Jerry, will you be asking any of these in our jail as well?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a number of inmates that we will be able to house. It'll be federal inmates at the Mahoney County Justice Center. That will provide financial benefit to Mahoney County. It will also help supplement our criminal justice fund. Then it enables us to do the things that we do in Mahoney County. And that'll be additional funds on top of the tax revenue that we get. So it'll help the whole criminal justice system here in Mahoney County.
Would it be, what would be the, like, per person type? I mean, just around about a couple hundred dollars a person?
It's a little, it's a little bit less than that.
Well, at least we're keeping people off the street.
Yes. And, and you know, Sheriff, I gotta hand it to you, you've always had a great relationship with Pete Elliott, the U.S. Marshal. I know through the years how you've worked with him and their staff and bringing federal inmates into our jail. And of course, the county benefited by that through a revenue stream, which was very helpful to us a few years ago. And I've seen that you've kept that relationship.
This has continued that and it's, it's advanced it quite a bit from the very beginning. And in the past, I've been in this for 30 years and I've seen the relationships great with the U.S. Marshals and I've seen them chill quite a bit with the U.S. Marshals. And that's one of the main focuses I wanted. It's totally a symbiotic relationship. They need, they need local governments, local law enforcement to supply their task forces to get fugitives out there. There's benefits in the housing. They need us and we need them. And if you don't have a great relationship with them, it, it just, it sets you back decades. It really does.
It goes to show you that prison, prison spaces, you know, at a premium now. I mean, crime isn't going down, unfortunately. It's going up. So having that avenue, I'm sure the Department of Justice is pleased with that.
Yeah, this, this, this turned out, I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the Marshals, but this turned out being really beneficial for the Marshal Service because they're 100% responsible for housing the federal inmates. And, you know, I think at first they were looking at a couple of places that were even out of state to potentially house these individuals. And it just doesn't make logistical sense to have to travel so far to get a federal inmate to bring him back to our area to go to court. It affects the judicial system. It affects how their attorneys see them and everything basically with the case.
I guess I would add that, you know, the, the interaction that you have, not only with the Marshals, but with the, the community, with us, everything, has really opened doors that, you know, through the justice tax, through the, you know, the numerous things that you've done to bring additional revenue into the system, has really benefited not only the criminal justice system within the Sheriff's Department, but also within the county because the interaction is there. It's, it's a great relationship. You know, Carol always talks about, we have a good team. But you guys have created, you know, through your tutelage and leadership to the Sheriff's Department, you know, a team of law enforcement, all inclusive in Mahoney County. And, you know, that, you know, I got numerous calls on, on prison guards and, and people that feared losing their jobs at the private prison. And this enables them to continue their jobs, you know, and, and not only that, but like you alluded to is what the, the income tax going into the city of Youngstown, the jobs, the interaction, the relationship. It really works for everybody and I really commend you and your staff. You've done an amazing job. And the federal marshals, they've always done a great job locally for us and it's always good to have that relationship, so.
And in CoreCivics, they were fabulous with, you know, the, the three different agencies, CoreCivics, the Marshals and our office. You know, we, we work together. I was on, last two months, I was on the phone almost every day, multiple times a day with Pete Elliott, just trying to come to some kind of a resolution and be able to work this out. But additional revenue also enables us to be aggressive with the different trends in law enforcement. We see a lot with human trafficking. We see a lot with child pornography. And we've been able to put together an incredibly successful human trafficking task force that focuses a lot on that. And that's what a lot of these funds pay for, a lot of the different things, you know? We have our drone unit. Now, I can go on and on with our, our different initiatives. But any type of revenue that, that, that isn't coming directly out of the taxpayer's pocket that we're able to create funds from a different way, if you think outside the box, so to speak, has been very beneficial for us.
Thank you. How about Tony or Mr. Beasley? Is Tony, can Tony hear us?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
You're on, sir.
Yeah, I apologize for being disconnected. I, I, I feel like I'm, I know my technology and then it humbles me. So, but yeah, thank you very much, Sheriff, for those words. I can only reiterate that the sheriff and his staff and the office have been so cooperative throughout all of this and, and really working strongly with the U.S. Marshal Service and us. So we're very appreciative of that, very appreciative of the Commission's consideration of this. I think hopefully that your question was answered. There was a question when this agreement would commence and it will commence the last day of May. So it's, we're, we're very close to the actual date where the IGA will be put into place with us in Mahoney County and then in turn, Mahoney County's agreement with the U.S. Marshal Service. And I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But again, we, we deeply appreciate your willingness to be a partner in, in all of this.
Tony, are you with CoreCivics or are you with the Justice Department?
Okay, sorry. I am an executive vice president with CoreCivic.
Okay.
And I'm based in Nashville.
Very good.
And Jeb Beasley is as well. And we have Natasha Metcalf who's with us. She is a vice president of CoreCivic and she is our lead attorney on, on these type of agreements.
Tony, this is Dave Ditster. I was just wondering, there probably is an extreme sense of urgency and need for the Commissioners to come to your office, isn't there, you know? So that, you know, we could, we could be in Nashville probably before the end of the week.
You have an open invitation, especially if you like good music and good food, so, yes.
Oh, my God.
Jerry, we good? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the good words. You're always on it, Jerry.
Appreciate your cooperation, Tony, working with our sheriff.
Of course, thank you.
Mr. Beasley care to speak?
I just would like to reiterate what Tony said. I'm just, our appreciation, particularly with the sheriff. He's right. We've worked over the last couple of months with this and we're grateful for everything he did to make this happen and keep these jobs in Mahoney County and city of Youngstown as well. So just thanks on behalf of the company and behalf of myself personally. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Carol?
You know, that's, you are so right. That teamwork just expands out to everybody in the county, in Mahoney County. We have a team. You have a team with your group over in the Sheriff's Department.
We were, and I was very OCD with this for the past two months. It's basically all I thought about was trying to get this done, so.
Because your team.
I'm just glad it was successful.
You had a team that you led to put this, this whole package together for what? The benefit of Mahoney County residents. Youngstown's part of Mahoney County. It saved their jobs in Mahoney County, as Dave and Anthony said, with the income tax. We have to look outside the box now and bring in what we can. And I gotta say, you run a very good justice system. I've been here to see many go through and you're aggressive and that's a good thing.
It's really a win-win for the community and everyone, Sheriff. So we commend you and always commend you. When the justice tax comes up, you're always front and center. And Jerry always leads, leads that for us and we're very proud of you. We appreciate it. Yes.
And we have allowed you to be part of our team.
I give a wholehearted thank you to the three of you as well because you had to sign this. This was something I had to present to you. I had to basically explain to you what it was. And without your commitment to it, I'm not allowed to enter into those agreements. I have to do it through you. So, you know, couldn't be done without you and through the cooperation of the three of you, so.
And your staff's great, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, Capa Bianco, he's all-star. He's an all-star. Okay, anyone else? No? Where did we end up? Did we vote on the? No, we have to vote on that. Okay, all right. Motion to approve resolutions A through G.
Motion to approve number three resolutions A through G.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Amiri Wiegetti?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, for the good of the order, any elected officials or department heads care to comment? And Anna had her hand up first. Didn't Lou?
Yes, Commissioners, I would just like to notify you of a new development in Mahoney County. Another division of the American Rescue Plan was that 70,000 emergency housing vouchers would be distributed across the United States. And Mahoney County was provided 41 emergency housing vouchers. This will be a partnership with Y M H A and the Continuum of Care. Y M H A did accept all 41 housing, emergency housing vouchers. And how we'll be proceeding with this will be a memory and understanding with Y M H A to issue these vouchers in the emergency housing situation directly through the coordinated entry process, which is run through the Mahoney County Continuum of Care, which typically, or their mission is to house homeless people. These emergency housing vouchers, again, the priority will, of assignment will come through the coordinated entry procedure, which is run by the Continuum of Care. But it will also be able to house varying types of people who are unstably housed. Some of the, you know, people fleeing domestic violence or stalking and that contact our social service agencies for housing through the Continuum of Care will now receive priority referrals to Y M H A through these emergency housing vouchers. So we're basically doubling the number of housing vouchers in Mahoney County. And we're looking forward to this cooperation and new partnership with Y M H A.
Well, Anna, I'm glad you made this announcement because one of the things that has really paralyzed people in this situation with Y M H A is there is no vouchers. There, the backlog is 1,200 to 1,500 people every year who are trying to get into, into housing. So, you know, we'll take 41, but I do know how important that is because I worked with that years and years ago. And it's hard to get people moved up on the list. And in the meantime, what are they supposed to do when they don't have a place to go? So I'm glad the Continuum of Care is involved in it and that these vouchers are coming to the Valley and I appreciate you announcing that.
Thank you.
Anna, where, where exactly is the Y M H A going to house? Where, where would that housing be located? Would it be in one of their high-rises? Are they going to have family units in there? How is that gonna make application?
These are all items that will be on the outside of the process. Finding HUD quality housing will probably be a challenge to expand our housing stock in Mahoney County. So I'm sure that will be something that will also be growing throughout this process.
So they will be taking not only applications from our homeless population that needs help, but also they'll be looking at. but also they'll be looking at other, other areas where they can get the housing stock. I'm just looking at the Zooms off.
Yeah, we will have, you know, it will be a process in locating housing. We're not sure what Y M H A has currently available for us to start using. The voucher's going to affect July 1st. Our MOU is due July 30th. We have to have it done sooner than later.
They give you copy of, of those houses that they would, they would request to be used for our homeless?
We haven't gotten that prior yet, too.
You haven't done that yet. Okay, I mean, I.
Well, it will be a process and coordination. We have to identify. The lead agency will be the coordinated entry grant, which is House and Health Network, and partner with whomever Y M H A details as their point person. But yes, we will be looking, I'm sure, for new qualified housing units for these vouchers. And again, I just wanted to touch base on what Commissioner Traficani said. And the difference, the change in these emergency housing vouchers is that the coordinated entry system for homelessness, we have approximately, I believe, 180 persons on that list for varying levels of homelessness. And they've always had to compete with those 1,200 people on the list, and they're rotating in the availability and so forth. So these are specific for these people that have been identified as homeless by the Continuum of Care, which of course, we all know, there's many avenues that people reach this point in their life or need Y M H A housing. So it's, it's kind of finally, there, we're meeting, meeting this need through these emergency housing vouchers specifically provided by the American Rescue Plan. These are not, and I want to make sure the Commissioners and public understand, this is a separate award. This is specifically from the federal government to HUD, and they are distributing these vouchers. This is separate from the American Rescue Plan that Audrey and I have proposed to you in moving forward, the, that we have referred to as $44 million. This is a completely different avenue of funding that we're receiving in Mahoning County for the, through the American Rescue Plan.
No, I realize that, Anna. The only thing I, I really worry about is the housing stock. It's gonna be put on those lists that are, and I'm not saying they're all bad. Please don't misunderstand that. But what I'm saying is I want to make sure that when these people are given the opportunity to, to be in a home or an apartment or a condo or whatever it might be, that they have followed all the HUD guidelines on being clean and adequate for that family, and not because a landlord wants to rent a property through HUD. That's all I'm saying. I want it to be, I want it to be fair for this person that's homeless. I'm looking after them.
Absolutely.
That's why I ask, where is the list of people that are gonna have it? You'll know that down the road.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's all I need. I'm, I'm in 100% think this is a needed. We have a lot of people in America, not only just in, we have a lot of people in Mahoning County that are homeless.
Or those suffering housing instability also. This will open up.
I agree.
Well, you know, with regard to Section 8 and the housing vouchers, that those properties are inspected probably more than any other landlord situation throughout the county. They're, they're very in-depth. There has to be lead remediation. It, it has to, you know, be able to be fit for habitation, running water, bathrooms, toilet sinks. They really go through a rigmarole to make sure if not, you don't get a Section 8 voucher. HUD will not, will not approve it, and they send out inspectors through Y M H A. So it's very regimented.
Well, I'm glad because.
Those standards are rather high.
The rent's good.
That is, you know, something that we're gonna have to, to maybe coordinate some, some housing improvement projects along the way to meet those standards so we can fill these vouchers.
Thank you, Anna.
Very good, Anna. Thank you very much. Lou Vega.
Hi, Commissioners. I just want to get this one out early. We're gonna be preparing on June 12th from 9:02 for one of our most popular drives. It's gonna be the electronics drive, Camp Hill Fairgrounds. And we are charging $20 a set regardless of the size, same as last year, but it was a very well-attended event, and we expect the same this year.
Okay. Thank you. Audrey?
I just want to say too, for anyone, any of the public that wants to come into any of the buildings, please check with those departments and those offices to make sure that they're completely open as some are changing some of their ways that they worked in the past. So it's good to check before you come in.
Very good. Thank you for that. Anyone else? No? Not being seen? Carol?
No, I, I've said enough today. I want to thank the sheriff for what, what he's doing to bring Mahoning County ahead of the game with the federal government and the state. We applaud that and welcome our new, our new staffer. Pleasant appointment to our floor. I'm not saying anything else. And Anthony and Dave now have a partner. But.
God bless you, Ryan. That's all I can say.
You broke the ceiling.
No, it's, no, I, I agree with everyone, you know, Sheriff, great job, as always. You know, your, you know, your experience and, you know, your longevity and, you know, the, the addition to the, to the whole process has been amazing, and, and you and your staff do a great job. We thank you. Ryan, welcome. You know, it's, you know, it's so thankful to get some testosterone on the floor up there. You know, you know, we, you know, we fight it every day, Anthony and I, you know, every day it's a battle, so. Welcome. We're so happy to have you onboard.
You had it so good till you come over here.
We, we really welcome you, you know, so. Gonna have a little cold spell out there, so we're, it's gonna only be in the 50s a couple of days. It'll be comfortable.
Good.
One thing I did notice on, from going down to the dog pound and seeing the great postings that Megan puts out there, we have, we're getting filled at the dog pound again. You know, there's so many strays, you know, the weather's warm. People let their dogs out to run and loose. They're not identified. They don't come pick them up. It's really sad if you see the situation that a lot of the animals are in. There was one dog, an elder dog, that was basically thrown away in the trash can, in a dumpster. And it was, it was like a little white poodle mix. They estimated to be a 12-years-old. They, they said it probably lived in a cage because its nails hadn't been cut in years. They'd all curled under. It's matted. It had cataracts on its eyes and kind of old, and they probably used it for breeding. Another reason not to buy animals from puppy mills. Come to the pound, get your dogs. There's great dogs down there. The staff does an amazing job, and there's a lot of situations, not only, you know, for the animals, for kids, for everybody that we need to be more conscious of and just be a little more respectful to each other and to our pets and to our elderly. And, you know, sometimes, you know, we get cooped up, we get out for the summer times and stuff, you know, things. All of our, all of our actions change and, you know, our opportunities change. So let's make sure we help those a little less fortunate than ourselves, so.
Commissioners, Audrey Morales, can I speak before you guys go?
Sure.
I just want to say, we followed the directions to bring all Mahoning County JAP staff back effective June 2nd. So the staff will be back, no longer working remote. But we have not made a decision to open up the doors to the public yet. We will continue business as we are doing it now and then look a little bit down the road before we start opening back up to the public. So just as you said, we want to make sure that people don't think the doors are completely open. We have been able to service the clients with them dropping off, and we'll continue that until I look into it a little bit further and see how this works out with everybody just coming back. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Thank you, Audrey. Keep us updated.
I surely will keep you updated. Looking forward to, once everything gets back, of how we're going to address that with the public coming back on a full-time basis into the building. So we just want to get through this phase and we can back. And we are servicing the client. The clients are continuing to be serviced. Phone calls are being answered. So if you guys foresee any problems or get any questions, you can give me a call, and we will talk about it and address that at a later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey, very much for that update.
Thank you.
And then in closing out, Ryan, congratulations. Welcome aboard with the Commissioners. As our budget analyst, look forward to working with you. Sheriff Green, congratulations to you again. Everything that you've done since you've been sheriff has been for the safety of this community and want to commend you on this contract and agreement on this new project that you're involved with now. And we want to thank you for all that you've done. Okay, Nancy, our next meeting?
It's next Thursday, right here.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.